We'll hear arguments next in 11:53. A booed against Detroit Board of Education. Petro, you may proceed whenever you're ready.
Mr. Chief Justice, may it please this court, I represent the appellate dissident schoolteachers in Detroit who have declined to, uh, declined willingly to pay dues to the Appelli Union. The Appelli Board of Education of Detroit, empowered by the Michigan Public Employment Relations Act, had agreed with the Appelli, a Federation of Teachers, I'll call it the Union henceforth, to discharge the appellate teachers if they refused to pay agency fees to the Union. In other words, what we have here is what is known as an agency shop contract. A contract which makes the payment of fees normally equivalent to Union dues a condition of employment. The extraordinary aspect of this case, of course, is that this condition of employment is a condition not of private employment, but of public employment, of employment by a subdivision of the state of Michigan. The teachers brought suit in the Michigan courts contending that the Board's continuing threat of discharge if they failed to pay dues to the Union constituted an outright per se indefensible violation of their rights under the First and Fourteenth Amendments. They went further and alleged that the Michigan statute empowering the Board to thus to condition employment was constitutionally overbroad as well. The case is here because the highest Michigan court to pass on the issue, the Supreme Court of Michigan, having denied an appeal, while indeed it handed down a decision which is not very easy to state clearly, nevertheless seemed to have dismissed out of hand, no question whatsoever about it, those aspects of the complaint which alleged per se an indefensible inconstitutionality. In what may be the one clean-cut holding of the case, the Michigan Court of Appeals did say that the Michigan para section 10 authorizing the agency shop was overbroad insofar as it had to be construed, according to the Michigan Court of Appeals, as authorizing the Appelli Union to use the agency fees, let us say in any way the Union saw fit, subject, of course, to its own Constitution and bylaws. There is language in the opinion of the Michigan Court of Appeals to the effect that it's well-recognized that the Union, in this case, engages in political action. The statute does not confine the Union's use of the exacted agency fees to only those things which we may call collective bargaining, but permits the use of the fees for the kinds of political conduct in which the Union normally engages. Now, while holding that the statute did permit the Union to use the agency fees for purposes other than collective bargaining, the truth of the matter is that the court did not say that the statute was in consequence thereof unconstitutionally overbroad. It's virtually impossible to avoid drawing the inference that if, say, we had been able to skewer the court to the wall and force it to make a comment one way or the other on this issue, it would have said, "Yes, the statute is unconstitutionally overbroad." As a great judge once said of another case, "The opinion is instinct with that kind of commitment" from the Michigan Court of Appeals. Still, in the face of this broad suggestion of unconstitutional overbreadth, the Michigan Court of Appeals affirmed the dismissal of the teacher's petition for injunctive relief, affirmed the dismissal of the teacher's case completely for that matter. Its idea seemed to be that if somehow the teachers managed to get it, to commit itself on the unconstitutionality of the statute, they should proceed by an action of one kind or another thereafter to recover from the Union the monies previously exacted and used by the Union unconstitutionally.
Well, it said in so many words the teachers would have such an action, didn't it?
I don't think you can say that, Mr. Justice Rehnquist. What it said is that the statute could violate the teacher's rights.
Well, and that if the Union, I thought it said if the Union chose to spend monies that it had collected for political activity, as the Court of Appeals described political activity, then an action would lie in the Michigan courts against the Union to recover.
That's what makes the case so extraordinarily difficult to deal with. When the court says not that this statute is unconstitutionally overbroad, but says instead, "The statute could violate the teacher's rights," all it has given us is another lawsuit, you know.
Well, it thought that the giving you another lawsuit was a sufficient cure of the overbreadth, if there was any, I take it.
Well, we'd have to win on the overbreadth argument all over again.
I wouldn't think so. I mean, you're talking mostly just about nomenclature rather than about the actual issues, I think.
Well, our problem is that we were dismissed. And we think that we were dismissed in spite of the fact that we had what the Michigan Court of Appeals very largely implied was a good constitutional claim. Now, if you are correct, Justice Rehnquist, in suggesting that we won on that point, then, of course, the denial of relief is inexplicable and plainly incompatible with everything this court has had to say about violations of First Amendment rights.
Isn't the denial based upon the statement of the court that your clients made no allegation that any of them specifically protested the expenditure of their funds for political purposes to which they objected?
Well, that's what it's based on, but this is not, there is no way to ground this holding in the decisions of this court.
Says therefore the plaintiffs are not entitled to relief on this basis.
This, the Michigan Court of Appeals demanded of our clients a kind of conduct preparatory to action that has not been required in any First Amendment case that I have ever encountered, and I believe that I've tried to read them all.
But you were attacking a brand-new statute, weren't you, where nothing had ever been exacted?
Well, there are all sorts of people paying agency fees under that statute. It is only our clients who had refused for a good long while to pay the agency fees. Still, some have refused, but others, under protest, have, because of the continued threats from the Detroit Board of Education to discharge them, they have now been paying agency fees. As a matter of fact, the other side makes a great deal of this, acting as though they, our clients, have disqualified themselves from this suit because they have paid the fees under protest. Now, it's perfectly understandable that they should do so. Many of them have been Detroit schoolteachers for a good long while. They're not about to give up their jobs, even though maybe they will get reinstatement at some future time. But they have preserved their rights. Their payments have been under protest. There has been no deliberate waiver.
One of your points here, I take it, is that whatever the Union uses the money for, they may not collect dues from your clients over their objections?
At the farthest reach, we insist-
That's one of your issues presented here, isn't it?
We insist that compelling these teachers to pay one cent to the Union for whatever purpose-
Right.
For whatever purpose is a perceived violation of the rights of freedom of association and that this stand is made an aforesore, I want, because it is inconceivable in view of what it is that public sector unions actually do by the common consent of every qualified person who has ever said a word on the subject. Everything that public sector unions do is political and ideological in character. Now, we have presented-
I didn't get your answer to Justice White's question.
Well, the answer was yes.
Yes.
It was an emphatic yes.
And now, let's assume we disagree with you on that. Your point is that at least they cannot collect if they're going to use it for political purposes.
Well, as I see things, Justice White, you see, that would not be any concession on my part because everything may be-
Well, I understand, but what if we disagree with you on that?
Well, that's-
Suppose using part of the money, suppose they're using part of the money for medical benefits or legal benefits or some kind of service to their members, and we just disagreed with you that that's political? Your other point is that they are using some of it for political purposes?
Well, the essential function of a Union is to engage in these negotiations of one kind or another with their opposite numbers. Now, it is true, I suppose, I should certainly have to withdraw the suggestion that there is no conceivable way in which the Union could spend money non-politically. I said, "Well, Dave Beck for the Teamsters used to spend Teamster money on trips to Europe, and I would be hard put to establish this as a political expenditure."
Well, if you're quite who he had with him.
Yeah, that's true. Qualification accepted.
Well, suppose they had a party every Friday night, just a pure social event.
Well, once again, the question is-
What about the health facilities that Unions have? What's wrong with that?
Let me say, Justice Marshall, that all the activities-
Well, is that fair?
All the, I am ready now to concede that all the activities other than those that the Union refers to as collective bargaining may putatively be non-political in character. One would have to make an examination of instance after instance to determine. But as far as those activities which the Union has generally been characterizing as, by the words, "collective bargaining,"
You say bargaining for a contract. Bargaining about wages would be categorized as political when you're bargaining with a public body.
That is correct, and I think that this court's decision last term in the National League of Cities case puts this proposition beyond any further doubt. I mean, if it is true, as was held in the National League of Cities case, that the determination and the administration of a state or locality's employment practices is a fundamental aspect of a state's sovereignty, and sovereignty is, of course, the political principle par excellence, then, public sector collective bargaining, which is explicitly designed to influence and affect, rearrange, and displace the sovereign decisions of states and localities in respect of their employment, must, of necessity, also be political in character.
But here, the Michigan Legislature, which presumably exercised the sovereign power of Michigan along with the governor, has passed a statute saying there shall be public sector collective bargaining.
Yes, indeed, and I suppose the Michigan Legislature has not, for the first time, engaged in a constitutionally dubious piece of conduct.
Well, but do you say that violates the National League of Cities principle?
The National League of Cities principle, I think you wrote that opinion, didn't you?
I did.
The National League of Cities case said that the determination of the wages, hours, and other conditions of employment is an integral aspect of the sovereignty of a state. Now, if we have a state which proceeds to give away this sovereign authority, what is the situation we find ourselves in? Are states permitted, in light of their duties to their constituents, to the people to whom they owe their ultimate power and position? Are states permitted thus to dispense with, to disperse, to share out, to give to this or that private agency pieces of the state's sovereign powers? I should point out that we're getting into very deep water here.
I thought you used the singular, right?
Some of us, one of us. For it is not I who raised the question whether the state of Michigan, in passing the para, had run into conflict with the League of Cities case. What I have suggested is that, in passing para section 10 authorizing the agency shop, the Michigan Legislature was in trouble with the National League of Cities case as well as with a number of other decisions handed down last term, most notably Elrod against Burns. I think Elrod against Burns is a case which is virtually indistinguishable from this one. May I proceed, Chief Justice?
You have only a minute or two left. You're into your rebuttal time now, if you wish to save any.
My instincts do not permit me to end this abruptly, so I must point out that there are some features about this case that need emphasis, and need emphasis in connection with the discussion that we have just been having. I shall go over them very rapidly because I do wish to save ten minutes for rebuttal. Now, the first, and I believe the most profound element in this case lies in the distinction between the activities of government and the activities of private persons. Government is one thing, and private persons and their activity are strictly another. There's a great deal made by the other side of the fact that collective bargaining, while collective bargaining in the private sector is the same thing as collective bargaining in the public sector. I believe that this lacks as much discernment as would be lacked by a person who said that all the Fords that roll off a Ford assembly line are the same, and it doesn't matter that one is driven by Sylvester Petro, a private person, and the other is driven by a policeman and is owned by a police force. They look alike, but they're different. The same thing is true, say, of the jet engines that are produced in such numbers. Some go into passenger commercial flights, and others go into B-1 bombers or B-52s. You take that same engine, take it out of a passenger plane, put it into a bomber, and you've got a different animal. In the same way, that activity, collective bargaining, which looks as though it is exactly the same in the public sector as it is in the private sector, is a different animal entirely. It is an animal that participates of the political character of the government that constitutes the employer. And when that collective bargaining thus becomes political in character to ask or to insist that a public employee, against his will, finance it, it is the same as forcing upon that public schoolteacher political and ideological objectives which, quite obviously, cannot be squared with the First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States. A clear compromise of the dissident teacher's political, associational, and speech rights is present in a case of this kind. Thank you, Your Honor.
Did you write this brief?
I'm afraid to acknowledge it. After, I'm sure, every member of this court feels that it's been greatly imposed upon by its length.
Would you think that this case needs 216 pages plus 53 of a responsive brief? 269 pages? We do have other cases here.
I am sorry, I made my apologies, and-
And another question I wanted to ask was, you don't have to answer this one, but you might reread the summary of the argument, and my question is whether it complies with our rules as to being a summary of your argument.
I shall do so.
Mr. Sacks?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Chief Justice, and may it please the court, perhaps in the remaining few minutes before the recess it would be profitable to indicate what this case does not involve. Clearly, I would suggest, on the state of the record, and as the case comes before the court, there is not a political expenditures issue, dealing with the question that Mr. Justice Rehnquist asked. The lower court, in fact, decided favorably to the contention of appellants as to the use of agency shop monies for political purposes, and made clear that were such monies to be expended, over their objection, they would indeed have a cause of action. Complaint was dismissed in the instant case because, in fact, they had never made any appropriate protest or in any timely fashion. It should be recalled, if the court please, that this complaint, that is the initial complaint in Warzac of which a gooood is virtually a carbon, was filed prior to the effective date of the act. In that circumstance, it was virtually identical to the Hanson case. Notwithstanding which, the plaintiffs alleged, although not one penny had been collected from anyone, nor, of course, therefore, nor had one penny been expended, that the Union was somehow using the money for political purposes unspecified as to which the plaintiffs objected. And they sought on that account not some remedy discreet and referable to expenditures or alleged expenditures of a political nature, but they sought, as in Hanson, to avoid the obligation of the agency shop clause entirely. They sought no relief whatsoever as to the claimed expenditures, and they did not itemize or specify any specific complaint, if any, which they had. They encanted a phrasing which presumably was intended to invoke a remedy which would set aside the clause entirely. Moreover, during the entire pendency of the litigation, they have been excused from enforcement of the clause. There has been no discharge of any plaintiff repellent. There has been no other enforcement. The fact of the matter is, then, that the lower court, after first saying that the statute did not admit, as this court had interpreted the Railway Labor Act to admit, of the possibility of expenditure or non-expenditure over objections of dissenters, and after saying that could present a constitutional dilemma, avoided the problem entirely by then agreeing with the contention of the plaintiffs and saying, "Yes, were that to happen, there would indeed be a remedy." We did not cross-appeal on that ruling. That is the matter, that's the fashion in which the matter comes before the court. In addition, as we have pointed out in our brief, the Union complying with-
Mr. Sacks, under your understanding of the Court of Appeals' ruling, would a particular member of the plaintiff group have to object to particular expenditures, or could he be, would it be sufficient for him generally to object to the expenditure of any money for any political purpose?
Mr. Justice Stevens, I think, under the holding of the court, there would have to be a specific objection, just as this court stated in the Lathrop case in the context of constitutional adjudication, such a requirement would be necessary. At least, it was necessary in the context of the complaint there. But I would respectfully suggest that that is academic now because the Union has adopted the remedial process which was recommended by this court in the Allen case as a means of facilitating ready restitution of the proportional payments insofar as they might be applied for political-
What happens to the Union member who doesn't particularly want to disclose his disagreement with particular Union policies or political policies advocated by the Union, but just doesn't want his money spent for any particular purpose? Is he out of luck at times?
No, Your Honor, under the internal remedy, he need not disclose anything specific. We've gone beyond what the appellate decision required.
Can he then, I'll go back to my first point, can he then simply say, "I don't want you spending my money for any political purpose"?
Yes, sir, he can.
And what happens then? Does he get all his money back, or what?
No, he would get, in accordance with the remedy of this court, and as provided by the balla-
No remedy of this court in this case, yet.
He would get a proportional refund insofar as any payments expended by the Union for political purposes are involved as, bears a relation to the total expenditure.
How are you going to compute that?
We're going to compute it in the best of good faith in accordance with the suggestion of the Allen case, Your Honor, and as many Unions do it-
Well, don't, just tell me dollars and cents. Say the dues is $50. How much does he get back if he says, "I don't want you spending the money for political purposes"?
Well, Your Honor, that would involve a-
Say 40% of your budget is political. Would he get 40% back?
On Your Honor's hypothetical, if it were 40%, there'd be a 40% refund.
That's the formula.
Obviously involves a determination, and as the procedure is set out in the appendix, there is a procedure for determination, there is disinterested review, and there's an opportunity to make precisely those formulations, and there was a deliberate intent to make the remedy as expansive and as generous as possible, so there would not be problems of this sort. And so, the fact is, then, I think I can fairly state to the court as the matter comes before you, it does not involve political issues in the sense that the court dealt with them in Street or dealt with them in Allen. What it seems to me is presented by this case, and the only appropriate question presented by the case, is- by the case, is whether the rulings of this Court, which it seems to me are quite clear in Hanson, in Street, in Allen, and Lathrop, are equally applicable or are no less applicable in the instance of a public employer with respect to its own employees. The case does not involve, contrary to the suggestions of the appellants, coerced membership of any kind, that's not the nature of the obligation. It does not involve coerced support of any views or positions of the Union. It does not involve ideological conformity in any fashion. It does not involve suppression of dissent. It does not involve censorship of any dissidents or dissenters' views. None of those matters are involved, and as I've already indicated, it does not involve, under the posture of the case, any of the political expenditures questions. I submit...
But it does involve, however, compulsory financial tribute to the Union, does it not?
It involves compulsory...
It's imposed by the State as a condition of governmental employment.
I would respectfully differ with the term tribute. There is compulsory obligation of financial support, Your Honor.
Well, isn't that the dictionary meaning of the word tribute?
Well, I, sometimes it has a pejorative sense, and I would think that inappropriate in this context, Your Honor. There is no question but that there is an obligation of financial support.
We'll resume there at 2 o'clock.
Thank you, Your Honor.
You may continue.
Thank you, Your Honor. May it please the Court. Appellies would suggest that an appropriate evaluation of the central issue which is tendered involves, necessarily involves, a consideration of the general Michigan labor code which is involved here. Michigan, like many other states, extraordinary number, has adopted a comprehensive labor relations code, which in central and significant aspects parallels the National Labor Relations Act. And there are numerous decisions of our own State Supreme Court which have indicated as much, and have indicated that teachings of the Federal Act, and indeed this Court's interpretations of that Act, are persuasive in terms of determining the significance and system of the State Act. Part of that system includes not only the disciplinary measures and procedures which were before this Court in the last term in the Crestwood case, involving anti-strike provisions, but involve affirmative features dealing with a process of collective bargaining. And in that respect, the Michigan statute, like the federal, like the National Labor Relations Act, provides that where employees in an appropriate bargaining unit have by democratic vote of a majority of them selected a representative. The public employer, basically in the local sector, has a responsibility to bargain in good faith with respect to wages, hours, and conditions of employment. The elements of those concepts are, of course, entirely familiar to this Court, and they're essentially of the same meaning in the State Court. An aspect which is critical to an understanding of the State System and indeed of the issues in this case is the proposition that the representative chosen under the Michigan scheme is the exclusive representative, the exclusive representative based upon majority rule. As such, as this Court has said several times, the organization is not a, quote, "private organization." It's an organization which is clothed with certain legislative authority in the context of what's involved here, as stated in Steele and Tunstall. It's an organization which has the authority to create and extinguish certain rights for the bargaining unit generally.
Is the, am I mistaken in my recollection that the federal labor legislation excludes governmental employers?
No, you are quite correct, Your Honor.
Does the legislative history of that legislation show why?
I don't, I don't believe so, Your Honor, and I really cannot answer the Court's question.
But it does clearly exclude...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and that, of course, I think is complimentary to leaving such matters to the States. Presumably, that was at least the essential congressional intent.
Well, it excludes, it excludes any kind of federal governmental employers also, doesn't it?
That is correct, and of course, the federal governmental employees have, in substantial measure, been covered by various executive orders which have provided similar kind of bargaining, though not precisely the same as is involved here. The corollary, it seems to me, which is critical to, again, the understanding of what is essentially here, to the proposition of exclusive representation, is that there is a duty of fair representation on the part of the exclusive bargaining representative to all members of the bargaining unit. It is perhaps not with, by accident, that in the appellate's entire brief, there is not an acknowledgement of the concept of the duty of fair representation, or a citation of Vaca or Humphrey or Hines or any of the cases which this Court, in which this Court has enunciated, those familiar doctrines.
Are those cases applicable here?
They are, by borrowing by the State Courts, the Michigan Court...
Not directly.
Not directly, no, Your Honor.
Has the Supreme Court of Michigan ever adopted that rule?
Yes, Your Honor, in a case called Low, L-O-W-E, against the restaurant workers, it has essentially adopted the authorities expressed by this Court, and indeed, in a more recent case, by the State Court of Appeals called Handwork, the Court has said that the requirements of the State statute may be, perhaps are more strict than those imposed by this Court, and allow less discretion, perhaps, in terms of the bargaining agent's authority to discontinue a grievance short of arbitration than this Court might permit. In any event, the significance is that there is a very serious burden and a very serious responsibility imposed upon the bargaining agent to represent all, including the plaintiffs in this case. There has been no challenge in this complaint or in this argument by appellants, and indeed, there is a disclaimer to the concept of exclusive representation, and so there, that is not an issue before the Court. And therefore, I would suggest that an appropriate corollary of the authority of the bargaining agent, indeed, this Court has said virtually there is such a corollary in the part of the bargaining agent to speak for all, is to represent all fairly. And therefore, that means that those who, whatever their exposition here, challenge the procedure of the statute, nevertheless have call upon the services of the organization which is required fairly and without any discrimination to render services, and no claim has been made...
Who determines, in this context, what's political and what's non-political?
In this context, Your Honor?
Yes, well, and under this, under, who would determine what, what portion of the Union's expenditures were for political purposes and would be subject to refund?
Well, under, if Your Honor's inquiring as to the internal procedure, the procedure is established in the first instance by the Union, subject to review by a disinterested panel.
Who is that?
To be appointed by the organization, by definition, required to consist of disinterested citizens.
But the applicant for a refund would have no voice in choosing that panel?
Not under the procedure constituted, Your Honor. Obviously, if the procedure is defective...
And how is that procedure constituted? Just by the Union, or by statute, or by the Court's interpretation, or what?
No, that procedure, Your Honor, was adopted internally, as, by virtue of Union resolution, the Union thought, following the recommendations...
And what, what does it include within the term "political"?
The term, Your Honor, I think, is broadly defined to refer to political issues and ideological issues of controversial, of a controversial nature, only incidentally related to collective bargaining.
But does it generally, does it generally, with it, does everything fall within political, other than, other than the services of the Union in negotiating and administering the collective bargaining contract?
Your Honor, there hasn't been an application yet, there hasn't been any instance for its explication. This would come at the conclusion of the calendar year. The intent, certainly from the language, is to be expansive, and as stated earlier in answer to Mr. Justice Stevens' question, to be generous in that regard, so that there would not be any bona fide question as to matters which are appropriately categorized as political would be subject to appropriate refund. There is no dispute in that regard.
Is there, assume the, assume the member or the applicant does not get what he thinks he's entitled to and disagrees with the Union's determination of what is political. May he go to court?
I would presume so, Your Honor. The procedure doesn't say so, but I would presume so.
Oh, presume...
Sir, Your Honor?
And would there be a cause of action for him in State Court?
Yes, sir.
The Court of Appeals said so, didn't it?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Mr. Sacks, what about those non-political expenditures that are also non-beneficial to the appellants? I'm thinking of social expenditures or conventions and publication expenditures and travel to expense and, if you will, organization elsewhere.
Your Honor, those matters are really not tendered by this record, and I would suggest, just as this Court felt it appropriate in Street and Lathrop to indicate that there ought to be an appropriate record to determine where the appropriate line is to be drawn, so it ought to be here. The rebate procedure does not speak to the points of which Your Honor speaks, nor do I understand the lower Court's decision to do so, but on the other hand, I don't understand that issue really to have been tendered, and it seems not to have been a focus of the litigation at any stage. The, I think the important...
Mr. Sacks, on that very point, I understand you're, you're generally taking the position that the rebate procedure is not ripe for a decision...
Yes, sir.
Is it not also perhaps true that the statute itself isn't really before us? Because the Court of Appeals, as I read the opinion, held that it did not apply to existing contracts, didn't have retroactive effect, and don't we have a prior contract involved in this litigation?
In a technical sense, that is true, Your Honor, though in fairness, I must say that there have been a sequence of contracts which, in general tenor, have repeated the same theme, but the contract which was initially involved here was a contract many years ago.
But the litigant before us doesn't have standing to attack this statute, as I piece it all together. Am I, am I right in that?
Well, I have to say, again, in fairness, that that point as such has not been raised, but Your Honor is quite correct...
But what is a jurisdictional point?
Yes, sir.
And would it not require us to dismiss this appeal and have the case come up where someone else was involved?
I would think so, Your Honor. I think it's not appropriately here, but again, I don't want to miss the...
I understand you're not relying on that, but we have a duty to satisfy ourselves...
And we have not raised the point, but the stat, the contract is long since gone, although there were succession of later contracts.
And the Court of Appeals did hold that the statute did not apply to the contract in this record.
That is correct, and remand it in that respect, and that aspect of the case has not been brought here by anyone, and has not remotely involved any issues which have been tendered here by either side.
So we're really being asked to review some dicta in the Court of Appeals' opinion?
I think that might very well be the case, Your Honor, and especially dicta which, under the view of the Appellees, comports very carefully with the prior pronouncements of this Court.
I don't know that I completely follow my brother Stevens' suggestion. It is that, since the Court of Appeals held that the statute did not apply to the contract in effect, is that it?
That's correct. The Court, the Court of Appeals...
And under those circumstances, is no standing in this...
I don't know if it's a standing question, Your Honor, and again, we have not raised the point. I understood Justice Stevens to cast it in terms of a jurisdictional question, and I have not addressed that matter...
No, jurisdictional in the standing sense, as I understood it.
Perhaps, Your Honor, the point, again, nobody has, none of the parties have addressed it, and the Court has not addressed it as such, the, what the, the decision in this respect of the lower Court was, was that the statute did not have retrospective application.
And therefore, did not apply...
That's correct.
...to the contract in this record. Is that it?
Yes, Your Honor.
Well, there's certainly a case of controversy between the two, between the employee and the, and the Union. I mean, his cause of action was, or his claim was, that the agency shop clause in the collective bargaining agreement was invalid, wasn't it?
That is correct.
And so there's certainly, he's, he's, he's got a stake in the controversy. He doesn't want to pay the, pay over the, the fee, isn't that right?
Yes, sir.
You wouldn't say that's an Article III case of controversy point.
Your Honor, again, I have not raised the issue, the only point...
Well, that is jurisdictional, though.
Yes, sir.
But, this question, just whether he's got, just whether he has standing to attack the statute?
We have not raised a standing defense.
I know you haven't, but suppose, suppose that he refused to pay under this collective bargaining agreement?
Yes.
Would he be fired?
After the conclusion of this litigation, presumably, he would be.
Let's suppose the statute had never been passed.
Yes, sir.
Would he have been fired?
I don't know, because in the light of the prior adjudication, Your Honor, there, the State Court, State Supreme Court, had held that there was not an appropriate statutory basis for the establishment of an agency shop clause, therefore, presumably, there not, would not have been one, and therefore, there would not have been a firing.
Well, I take it, then, that you were defending, you're the ones who were relying on the statute.
Yes, Your Honor.
Not the plaintiff.
That's correct.
So you're the ones who raised the statute.
That's correct.
Otherwise, you would have lost under the prior...
That is correct, Your Honor.
Thank you.
But you've raised the statute, but you now concede, in view of the holding of the Court of Appeals, that the statute does not apply.
See that the Court indicated that the statute did not have retroactive application.
So it doesn't apply to this case. So you have no defense on the statute, and there's no statutory question before us.
But the statutory question is basically one of state law. We wouldn't interpret the Michigan statute, their, their claim, as I understand, your opponent's claim, is that the deduction, compelled deduction of dues violates their First Amendment rights under the federal Constitution.
Yes, sir.
Your response is that it doesn't. The way it came up to the Michigan State Courts was that the Michigan Court said, yes, there's sufficient statutory authorization for you to do that, and in addition, we find there's no constitutional violation.
That's correct.
Well, but counsel, isn't it true that the compulsion for the deduction as to this contract is solely based on the contract? There's no statutory authorization for the deduction.
There was no deduction in that respect, Your Honor. I have to indicate that both parties sought rehearing below and then clarification as to what the purpose of the remand was with respect to the retroactive period. Since there had been no compulsion, since there had been no collection, we could not understand what the point of it was, and we, to this day, do not understand what issue remained on that score, but it was not framed in the terms that Your Honor is now questioning.
Let me put it this way, had there not been, if the Court of Appeals had said the statute is totally void, had never been passed, or something like that, because it's held it doesn't apply to this contract, then you would not have been able to compel the deduction because of an independent state ground reason, isn't that correct?
Yes, entirely independent state ground...
So there's really no federal question before us, is what I'm saying, is the only, there is no compulsion now for a deduction as to these particular litigants.
As to that past period, that would be so subject to the point that Mr. Justice White is raising, that we acknowledge fairly there...
But the, 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 part of the claim, part of the claim of the plaintiff, wasn't it, in the, in his complaint, was that it was unconstitutional for the collective bargaining agreement with the State to compel him to contribute to the Union activities?
That's correct.
I mean, it didn't, that claim doesn't, didn't depend on whether there's a statute or not.
But as to that claim, didn't the Michigan Court hold that he was right apart from this later statute?
Well, the Court said that the contract was, and the statute, I think, were essentially one issue. I don't think plaintiffs attempted to disassociate the contract from the statute. They, their First Amendment claim was that there was statutory action involved.
But the, but you relied, you relied on the statute...
Yes, sir.
And say that this, the reason that this is now valid is because there's a right to a refund. Now, whether, whether or not there, the Michigan statute was in existence or not, this petitioner's claim was rejected, and part of his claim was that collecting a fee to support Union activities was unconstitutional.
That clearly was the claim, Your Honor.
And it's still his claim right here, his number one claim.
Without regard to what use it may be applied.
Statute or not, that's part of his claim right now.
I presume that is so, Your Honor.
It's enough that it's the Detroit School Board that is making the deduction to bring into play the, at least the claim of First and Fourteenth Amendment.
The fact of the matter is, Justice Rehnquist, the Detroit School Board, as the appellants before you is not making a deduction, there has been no deduction because there has been a stay of the enforcement as to all of these appellants.
Well, but the fact that something has stayed pending review here doesn't moot it for that reason, I guess.
No, but I want to be clear, stayed in a contractual sense, not by virtue of any court action. The contract itself provided that during the pendency of litigation, there would not be enforcement, and therefore, the plaintiffs have not been under any compulsion, and they have not, as I sought to state in my opening remarks, ever, they've never sought to challenge the expenditures as such, they sought to address, as plaintiffs did in Hanson, the collection as such.
Mr. Sacks, I still don't follow your colloquy with my brother White. Mr. Sacks, I still don't follow your colloquy with my brother White. Didn't you tell us earlier that the Michigan Supreme Court said that this very contract between the school board and this union was invalid for one of statutory authority?
Your Honor, the court, I think in its opinion, did not distinguish, speak to this contract as such.
No, I'm speaking, I thought you referred to some earlier opinion--
There is an earlier case not involving these parties, Your Honor.
All right, not involving these parties, but a contract between a public body and a labor union--
Yes, Your Honor.
With a, an agency clause in it?
Yes.
And there held that the agency clause was unenforceable, invalid, or whatever?
For purely statutory reasons.
Right, that doesn't, would not, not apply. If this statute is not applicable to the particular contract we've got involved here, then where's there any First Amendment issue? Well, they overruled, the, the, the petitioner's claim was overruled, though, was rejected by the Michigan Supreme Court, or by the Michigan court, wasn't it?
Yes.
And that included a rejection of his First Amendment claim, with or without a statute.
That is correct. I hope I've answered the Court's questions.
Where's that leave us? Well, it leaves a federal question here, doesn't it?
I'm not sure it does, so--
Well, Your Honor, I'm not sure. May I, I don't know what time is now left, but may I--
There's a federal question involved in a, in a case of, this contract contains an unenforceable provision, it must be as if there never was such a provision.
But then they ruled against--
On some state law ground. Doesn't make the issue here.
The petitioner should have won that, but he didn't, did he?
Your Honor, on that point, the court did remand with respect to an appropriate remedy as to the retroactive period, that's not before this court.
This is an intermedia appellate court?
Yes, Your Honor.
I don't, I take it it couldn't have overruled the prior Supreme Court opinion?
No, of course not. It didn't presume to do so, but it was acting not on the basis, Mr. Justice Brennan, of the earlier opinion, but on the basis of the intervening statute enacted, I think, in 1973, which at that point sanctioned such agreements as this, and did so expressly. So there was no longer a question of a statutory basis for the action which was taken.
And both parties petitioned the Supreme Court of Michigan for review, and it was denied.
That's correct. The, the appellants petitioned on the grounds which they would bring here. We petitioned because we simply could not understand the purpose of the remand, since there really was nothing that was not moot, and since there had been no compulsion, we could not understand what was viable for purposes of any remand, and indeed, the appellants seemed to join with us in that quandary as to what the purpose of the remand was. But in any event, that is not before this court, and has not been presented. I would simply want to emphasize, it seems that in the light of the precedents of this court, on no basis, considering the parallel pattern of the Michigan statute to that of the federal statute, is any genuine First Amendment issue of speech or association involved. We're really back to the initial, if the questions are here, we're back to those initial questions, and it seems to me that the issue is what this court characterized in the last term in the Black Lung Benefits case, thus or against Turner, Elkhorn, as a legislative act adjusting the burdens and benefits of economic life, and that's all that's involved. And such a statute, it seems to me, comes to this court with a presumption of validity, and it's for the plaintiffs, not for the defendants, to justify it. There are no First Amendment implications involved. Thank you, Your Honor.
Petron, do you have anything further? You have six minutes left.
Six minutes? Thank you. Mr. Chief Justice, Honorable Associate Justices, I think thoroughly, without any intention, Mr. Sacks has completely misled us all concerning the posture of this case. It all goes back to the Smigel decision by the Michigan Supreme Court, holding that, in the absence of an authorizing agency shop provision in the Michigan para, no public employer could, as a matter of statutory power, enter a union, or agency shop contract. Clear? Now, after that decision, the Michigan Legislature proceeded immediately to pass the statute wanting, as of the time of the Smigel decision. Now, observe very carefully, honorable justices. It was after the passage of that enabling agency shop provision that the contract in issue in this case was entered by the parties. If this does not establish a federal question, then I don't know what a federal question is. The contract involved in this case was entered by the parties after the passage of the 1973 Michigan para section 10. Now, since I have only three minutes left, let me proceed immediately--
Mr. Petron, may I just ask, why then, in the Court of Appeals' opinion, did they discuss the issue of retroactivity?
This was, this was involved-- You're going to destroy all my time now. This was involved in a question of whether or not a contract then in existence, a contract prior to the one sub judice here, should be applicable to the, to the plaintiffs in that case. Not this one. This is a new ballgame.
You mean, in other words, the contract in the record before us is different from the contract in the record--
That is correct.
--before the Court of Appeals, and we nevertheless were reviewing that decision?
No. An aspect of the contract involved in the Warjack case was controlled by force of precedent, not by force of, you know, judgment, in the, in the Smigel decision. This court held only that as to that period, you know, these people were employees throughout that period, throughout that period involved in the Smigel case, throughout the period involved in this abused Warjack case. Now, the question was whether or not they were going to be affected by the Michigan para amendment in 1973, which, the language of it is relevant here. The Michigan para speaks in terms of reaffirming its favoring an agency shop. It's a, it's a sort of, if I may say so, without antagonizing the court, a kind of a shell game by the Michigan Legislature, designed to establish retroactively the validity of the agency shop para passed in 1973. And the only thing that this Michigan Court of Appeals, from which we're appealing, did with, with respect to that, was saying, no, there can be no retro-- Pardon me?
Is this case filed in '69?
This particular case?
Yes, sir.
In 1969, yes.
And so the '73 Act applied in '69?
No, it applied as of the time when the case came back up to a, a contract, the contract that these parties are bound by, if they're bound by at all, is a contract that entered by the parties after, no, after '69, '73. What was the date?
Is that contract in this record?
This contract, yes.
The '73 contract in this record?
Yes, it's in the record. Let's see. See the record brief in support of claim of appeal, the Michigan Court of Appeals, April 11, 1974, at 5:12. Appendices D and G. Letter from Theodore Sacks, Honorable Charles Kaufman, Michigan Circuit Court, October 19, 1973, enclosure. Mr. Justice Marshall, there cannot be any doubt whatsoever that the contract involved in this case is a contract postdating the Michigan para amendment, the constitutionality of which we are challenging. No doubt whatsoever, this is the contract in issue in this case, not the one that was, that was the subject of the Smigel decision, and which, by virtue of the Smigel decision--
Schmigel in it?
Smigel is the decision in which the Michigan Supreme Court stimulated the legislation that's involved here. Had the Michigan Supreme Court not decided in Smigel that the state and local authorities were without power to enter agency shop agreements, we should probably never have had this statute. Oh, Smigel's not my case, no. Well, it provides the background for the Michigan para amendment. The, the Michigan agency shop statute was passed because the Michigan Legislature found that it could not have agency shops in public employment without specifically authorizing them. I beg the court for two minutes in order to make what I think is the final point that must be made. May I have him, please?
Go ahead, respond, if that's a further response to Justice Marshall.
The fundamental deficiency from the point of view of the First Amendment in this case is that the union intends to have, to put it most mildly, forced loans from the teachers in order to use those forced loans to promote political causes to which the teachers must be presumed, in view of their general objection, the teachers are opposed to them. Now, there is no way that forcing people to support political causes to which they are opposed can be squared with either the First Amendment or this court's uniform decisions they're under, as Mr. Justice Brennan--
Now, you're restating the arguments you made before, so we have that argument.
Well, it goes to the rebate procedure.
Yes.
The rebate procedure is nothing but--
You've covered that sufficiently, counsel.
All right.
I want to add something to what my brother Blackman said about this case. You filed a 216-page brief here, and I address this not as a criticism to you primarily, but as an observation to the bar. In this case, there are 600 pages of material filed with this, which means that if every case heard today had been treated the same way, the members of this court would have had 2,400 pages to read, not including the cases and other authorities cited, which we do read. And I think, in a sense, you may have done a favor to the court to furnish an exhibit A for why we should activate a rule limiting the briefs in this court to 50 pages unless the court grants special leave. I simply suggest--
I pray the court's indulgence, just one word.
My, no, I need no response to that. I'm simply making that observation to the bar generally, as well as to you, because you filed a 216-page brief when 75 pages easily would have done it. Thank you, gentlemen. The case is submitted.